Sorry, we just thought like we had to do something.
I was looking for somebody else.
We can avoid.
She's like, we can avoid.
Just give you one.
Okay, that's important. And I'm so sorry. It wasn't our understanding of that. So, thank you. All right, we're on it.
Now what? No.
Hey, Logan?
Yeah.
Are we able to pull up the, uh, the pretty pictures of the?
Yeah, we've got them ready.
Okay, all right. All right, we all set?
We're set.
I'd like to call the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, January 16th, 2024 to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome to everyone here this evening, both on, uh, on TV and, uh, online and in the audience. First item off is the agenda. Are any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, sir.
Seeing none, uh, I'll move the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's approved. This evening, presentations, proclamations, and acknowledgements. We have none. We'll move to item four, response to public comment. Uh, my understanding is we have nothing to report there. And number five, public comments. So, anyone wishing to come before council may do so. State your name and address, and if you can, limit your comments to three minutes or less. Again, this is, this, these comments are open for things that are not on the agenda. So if you are here for the public hearing, this is not the time. I'll tell you when that is a little later. So, public comment. Anyone may come forward. Audience open. Seeing no one making a mad dash, I'll close the public comment period and we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following are the consent agenda items. Bill listings, minutes from our regular meetings of December 21st, January 2nd, our work session from January 2nd. Licensing for 2024 solid waste haulers. Agreement to provide solid waste and recycling coordination services. This between Farmington, Hastings, and Rosemont Coordinator. The JPA with Dakota County for acquisition and construction of the Rosemont Greenway. Uh, this is in the Carimore Crossing area. Accept the feasibility report and order public hearing for the Aspen Avenue Extension Project. Uh, this is between forty, Highway 42 and Conimera out near Lifetime. Approval of the city entry into a JPA with Dakota County for a temporary traffic signal on 42 and Blaine Avenue. Renewal of the small-scale mineral extraction permits for, and we've got several here, Bolander, the Vestera, Schaefer, and Dakota Aggregates. And a zoning ordinance text amendment requesting, uh, a rural residential modification. Application to conduct off-site gambling from the Rosemont Area Hockey Association. The 2024 Community Development Block Grant allocation. The 2024 to '28 Dakota County South Metro SWAT, JPA from, uh, for 2024 to 2028. And the approval of a senior police records specialist position in grade revision. Council, anyone from council wishing to pull any of these items?
Item O.
Item O will pull. And I'd like to pull, uh, 6E. So, would someone like to move consent agenda, A through R, with E and O?
Some move. Some move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion by Tyson, second by Freski. Roll, please.
Aye.
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 Consent agenda's approved for zero. We'll pull first items up. Uh, 6E. I pulled this item and Mr. Schultz. Not a whole lot for you to talk about here, but I just wanted to, uh, I pulled this for, um, just recognition of the residential haulers that we have. So we have five, six haulers, correct? And the point I was trying to make to this is every year we run into questions about why we don't have one service that handles all the city. Or, on the opposite side of the spectrum, we have, which we do, six different haulers that, uh, may come through the neighborhoods. And so I just wanted to call, here we have the six that are listed. Uh, Waste Management, Nitty Sanitation, Allied Waste, Dick Sanitation, Highland Sanitation, and Inver Grove Sanitation. My only thing for bringing this up is, uh, we give you the most opportunity to contract with whoever you want. Um, in some cities, they try to do just one hauler and it creates a lot of angst. And so, the way that Rosemont has approached this in the past and continues is that if you are in a neighborhood and you want to reduce that traffic, we ask that you as neighbors get together and maybe contract with one service. And so this is one way of reducing the amount of time and effort, I guess, of, uh, of having up to six. Although generally, I pretty much only see two or three at the most in some of ours.
Correct, Mayor and council. Um, you know, we, we do promote that neighborhoods do band together and try and make a decision on only maybe one or two carriers in the neighborhood. A lot of times, the, the carriers themselves will negotiate with folks when they're, when they have a handful, you know, anywhere from, you know, five to 25, uh, haul, you know, haul users in a neighborhood, they'll give you a better price. The other thing to note is that with our haulers, our city ordinance identifies that when a hauler leaves the residential, uh, industry, we don't replace that hauler. So over the years, I think probably, you know, 15, 20 years ago, we had, you know, seven or eight, nine haulers. And over the years, they've either combined, they've sold out, they've been bought out, and that number continues to get smaller. So our goal is to end up with like, you know, four haulers, max, maybe three in the future. So that people do have a, a good choice and options. But at the same time, we don't have, you know, seven different residential trucks going up and down streets every day. So, um, that's why we, we do encourage people to try and work with their neighbors and try to, you know, limit, you know, who they have coming through their neighborhoods.
Thank you. Just wanted to kind of highlight and bring that forward. Any other comments from council? Otherwise, I'll go ahead and move the recommended action to approve the license for the firms listed in the executive summary to haul solid waste at the City of Rosemont. Is there a second?
Second.
Give the second to Freski. Roll, please.
Wiesenso?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
That concludes 6E, and then we'll go on to 6O.
Yep, and I just pulled this, um, for clarification. Um, in, in the memo, um, the Rosemont Area Hockey Association is using their gambling, uh, permit uh, to do the event on Saturday, the February 17th, which I think is the bingo. Uh, but then it also says it'll be a fundraiser for Leprechaun Day. So just wanted to make sure we clarified, who is the beneficiary of the fundraiser? Is it Raha or is it Leprechaun Days?
Paul, I can answer as the liaison to both Leprechaun Days and Raha. Um, we are running our annual bingo event to fundraise for Leprechaun Days. In the past, we always partner with an organization within Rosemont for, to use their gambling license for bingo because Leprechaun Days does not have a gambling license and it doesn't make sense. We only do one to two events a year. In the past couple of years, it was Rosemont Football Boosters, and they have opted out. So we are now partnering with Raha.
Okay.
A hundred percent of the benefits goes back to Leprechaun Days Committee.
Okay.
Um, we're just doing it in partnership with them and for them, it's kind of additional PR and communications.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Perfect.
Good to know.
Yep, thank you.
Would you like to move the recommended action?
Yep, with that, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution approving an application to conduct off-site gambling uh, for Rosemont Area Hockey Association.
Second.
Motion by Essler, second by Tyson. Roll, please.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Wiesenso?
Aye. That completes 6O. Um, before we move on from, uh, the consent agenda, there is, uh, two I'd like to kind of just do a go back on. 6G and 6H. If we could pull up the, uh, the graphic that shows where those, uh, two items are located in the community. Uh, the first one is, um, the, uh, it was a JPA with Dakota County for the acquisition and construction of the Rosemont Greenway. This is in the Carimore Crossing area. Just wanted that highlighted. So residents in and around that area and also the rest of the residents kind of know where we're putting the Greenway, uh, extension. And if you could, just speak to the timing on that.
Okay. I don't know how well this is going to work out, Mayor and council members, but, uh, so the, um, the, the portion of the Greenway that is already built, so this is kind of a comeback for, um, the city working on behalf of Dakota County and the developer. Um, we had, uh, the county and the developer had an agreement to, uh, have the developer install the Greenway improvements when they did the rest of the streets and utilities and the infrastructure improvements. So, on this map, um, this pink area here is the Greenway and the Greenway Trail segment that was built along with the trail, uh, under the underpass under Akron Avenue. Um, this area here on the map is the Flint Hills Athletic Complex. Um, you can see the, the, this long green line on the, the left side of the map, that's the Bella Vista Greenway. And so the Carimore section was built two years ago. And, uh, the developer is now coming back requesting the funding that was promised by Dakota County. And so the city is working, uh, on behalf of both parties to connect the two, to get the finances in place. And then we will act, um, as the administrator of those funds for the developer and Dakota County. So really, this Greenway is, is fairly well-connected. There's one small missing segment, um, on this property that is owned by the McMinimes. It's kind of the, the middle segment that we're missing. Other than that, we'll have, uh, a, a nice trail, a 10-foot wide trail segment that starts down in, uh, um, Meadows Park, crosses over Bon Air Path, goes all the way through, uh, Bella Vista. Eventually, will connect up to the Carimore Crossing. And we are working on trail, uh, sections right now in the Flint Hills Athletic Complex. And that'll come all the way down to the bottom of, of the Flint Hills Athletic Complex on the south side on Bon Air. So it's a nice trail loop that will continue out further east, going out to the Spring Lake Park area from Dakota County in the future.
I just appreciate the clarification. The crossing, the segment is already existing. This is-
Correct.
There's not like another one coming through or anything like that.
Yep, the segment is complete. Uh, the trail has been in use now for about a year. And now the, they've just kind of finalized a bunch of their improvement projects out those, out there. So they have the final billings and all of the, um, you know, warranty work is done and everything is in place. And so now, the county will pay the city and in turn, we will forward that money on to the developer for paying for that segment of the trail section.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And then the other one I wanted to give a little life to was, uh, 6H, the Aspen Avenue Extension. This is a, a new, new part of town that's growing and just wanted to kind of highlight and speak to, I guess, the traffic, um, that's going to be redirected.
Right.
Yep.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, again, Aspen Avenue, I think you alluded to it when you were listing off the consent agenda items. But the corridor is essentially abutting the east side of the Lifetime Development. Uh, right there, connecting Conimera with County Road 42. That will allow traffic to be, uh, routed out of that site as commercial development intensifies. There, there will be multiple different paths that one could take, both to access that property and those businesses and, uh, and to leave through there. The other part that, uh, this will enable is continued development to the east side of that roadway as interest becomes intensified there. You can see there's the old Dakota County Technical College and former city hall property there to the east that, uh, I believe the DCTC is, is looking to perhaps, uh, sell off at some point. So this would enable redevelopment of that property should somebody choose to come in and do that. Corridor will include, uh, trail as well as utilities to help serve those properties in the future.
Alrighty, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, so that fully completes, uh, the consent agenda. We'll move to the public hearing, item 7A. Public Improvement Hearing for the 2024 Street Improvement Project, City Project 202401. All right. Mr. Erickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a, uh, a presentation and I will go through that. Uh, I won't make a, I'll do my best to keep it succinct. And then after that, uh, you can open the public hearing and, and hear the comments. So, um, again, this 24th Street Improvement Project, you can see in the map there, the, the streets that have been, um, that are on that program, um, and they're detailed here a little bit further. I wouldn't, want to make, uh, just a comment. You'll see numbers in brackets behind the roadway. That is the payment condition rating for each of those roads. So, um, none of them are in fantastic shape. They range from basically 11 up to 59, if you think of that on a, a percentage or a scale from zero to 100. Um, again, our goal to really rehabilitate the pavement through there. Uh, a few other little utility-type improvements, um, but generally, all street work. All of them are local roadways. They do range in that 30 to 32 feet in width. Um, it's all urban section, so curb and gutter throughout. And, um, again, that just kind of some, some general review of that. Um, one of the other big things that we'll do as part of that is improve the, uh, the ADA pedestrian ramps at the intersections to meet current standards. So, um, again, uh, reclaim is what's anticipated on this work, um, just because of the condition for, of those roads right now. We did, uh, we did put a video on the city website, so I know that, uh, I understand what reclaim is. The council members, you've probably seen that, but just, um, that's not always something that the public knows about. So, if there's an opportunity, um, and you want to know a little bit more about it, you can certainly go take a look at that. That video, it does a nice job of that. So, um, we would do some spot replacement of curb and gutters somewhere that's severely damaged or, um, sagging and holding water, not getting to the catch basins. We would do some repairs on that. Um, and then again, same thing with the sidewalk. And I mentioned the, the ADA improvements as needed. So, um, just a couple photos of past projects and what that looks like. One of the, the biggest things, and we've heard a few comments on this, is, uh, just an idea from our consultant as they looked through and, and saw a couple streets that potentially could be, um, removed. So the idea behind that would be to remove those streets and then put in a, um, a 10-foot wide paved trail that would still keep those connections in place. So, uh, vehicular traffic would be prevented. However, um, you know, kids on bikes or running or you'd still be able to walk your dog, that kind of thing through there. There's some savings on construction initially, um, not substantial, but the real savings would come for future maintenance, uh, issues in there. And then, um, it is noted that we had the potential for, uh, putting rain gardens in or some, some sort of landscaping as well, just to, to make that, that area through there, um, presentable and in character with the residential neighborhood. Again, just a little touch on some of the utility improvements. We would be adding, uh, some valves on some of the existing hydrants. They currently don't have valves. So if we have to do repairs now, we do need to shut down a portion of the street. And, and the residents would have their water shut off for a period of time. So this, this does help with that. Um, so again, those are, those would be deeper excavations by those, by those homes. No, no surprises here, at least for me, I should say. Um, and again, large equipment, gravel-type surface for at least a portion of the project until the, the paving comes back. Um, dust, noise, get some rain, there'll be mud. Um, there would be some, you know, staking or flags in, in, uh, the residents' yards. And then the potential for some impacts to, uh, to the edge of yards if we had to do any curb replacement. Um, I do want to say that if, uh, if there's damage to, to driveways, that damage would be repaired with, uh, with the curb and gutter. Generally, we're not going to go into somebody's yard if we're not doing anything with a curb and gutter. So... And, and all that would be restored, um, at the end of the project. Just touching base a little bit on the, the public engagement. So there was a neighborhood meeting that was held on the 6th of December. Uh, it was lightly attended, so we sent a mailing out later, um, just a couple days after that with some, with similar information, again, uh, links to the city's project website. Thanks to the help of Lee, we were able to put a, uh, I'll call it a plain language URL for the, for the link, so you don't have to remember a bunch of numbers and/or letters. It's, you know, rosemountmn.gov backslash 2024streets. Something even I can remember on that. So, uh, just a few little general feedback that we've heard from the residents. Um, questions clarifying scope, trying to understand what's being done. Concerns about access to their home through the driveway, uh, you know, how long would they be delayed um, or not able to access. We also had some, uh, residents make comments about some speeding and inattentive driving. So we actually had a Traffic Safety Committee meeting today that was brought up. So, um, Public Works in cooperation with the Police Department will, will be taking a look at that um, throughout the next few weeks here. There were questions about parking restrictions and whether any of those were going to be implemented. At this point in time, there's no plan to change any restrictions that are or are not in place. Um, and again, I mentioned the, the restoration of yards, so that's, that is something that some of the residents had questions about. Also, there were a few comments on some backyard drainage issues that, that could potentially be addressed if those streets are removed. Um, otherwise, it's, it's not likely. And then, uh, other pedestrian improvements that are outside the project corridor or the project area. Um, in particular, we've had some questions about Shannon Parkway and 151st Street. So just getting, trying to get out in front of that one. We do have a, a plan to review pedestrian crossings throughout the city on the collector roadway system. That's likely to start next year at some point. And that'll, that'll identify those areas just to help put together a plan for improved pedestrian improvements throughout that, throughout the, the whole city. So we have a better plan as opposed to, uh, spot review of that. And of course, always, uh, there's always questions on assessments. Not, that's not uncommon. I realize that. I've come to, actually, I've come to expect that. I, I would have been surprised had there not been. So... Um, and then of course, there were some questions on the street removals. What does that mean? Concerns about the fact that, am I going to be able to, to even get through there at all? So, um, I did have a few more, uh, questions that came up earlier today and I've addressed those. I provided an updated, um, list of those comments to the council, um, this evening. And we can, since the one that you had in the packet has been posted online, I can, I will certainly, um, look to probably put this on the project website so that folks can see that as well. And then just a real quick, high-level summary on our estimated cost there and, uh, and the funding sources. So you'll notice, um, you know, the street improvements are of course, the bulk of the cost on this project. And it's ju- just under $2 million is the estimate at this point. That does work out to be about, um, you know, a little over a million dollars, uh, from the, from the street fund for that. And then of course, assessments are about $600,000. The city does 35% of the street cost only for assessments. So... Um, and again, there will be, there'll, here's the properties being assessed. And, uh, just call your attention to those. There's a few properties you'll note, um, on the south end that are in 155th Street. The city's policy is only to assess those properties that are addressed off streets being improved. So, there's a, a few properties you'll note that, that don't have any assessments being proposed on them. Um, it's because they're not addressed on either Cloret or, uh, Columbia Way. And finally, just, again, this is, this is the improvement hearing, of course. Um, but just, I know the assessment questions are likely to come up. There will be additional information at the assessment hearing planned for the middle of April, the second council meeting then. Um, I did mention, you know, how they're assessed, the percentage that's, um, that's used in doing that. It is a 10-year assessment term, should the residents, uh, have that certified to the county for their property taxes. We do have an estimated amount for both single-family and then there's a small multi-family, um, portion just on the, uh, on the east, or excuse me, the west side of Cloret, right up by 151st Street. So... Those are the, those are the estimated assessments at this point in time. Again, final assessments would be based on the bid, um, when we have that contract amount. And then a quick rundown on the schedule. So, looking to have, um, some discussion on the improvement hearing this evening. I think as well, um, you know, we'll move to look for the final design being done, you know, early to mid-February and then opening bids in, uh, in March. And finally, contract award at the second council meeting in March. At which point in time, we'd call the assessment hearing. And the assessment hearing would then be roughly a month later. Contract, or, excuse me, construction to start in, uh, in this, you know, late spring, early summer, and then be completed by, uh, September timeframe. And then just a quick note, I do have Larry Poplar from TKDA. He's here as the, uh, as the project manager on this project. And, um, and of course, there's the contact info. Some of this stuff, I realize, uh, it will get post, this presentation will get posted. So some of it might be for, um, the residents' consumption at a later date. So, and with that, I will conclude my presentation.
Can you leave up, uh, one of the pictures there? Yeah, that's good. Open it up to council.
Um, can you go back to the slide beginning where it showed the map of the streets? And then it highlighted the two streets that are being proposed to close? Yep, break it.
Yes.
So, a couple questions. Um, is this, did we do any traffic counts on these streets to determine if it was worth?
We, we did not.
Okay. It, and I ask because a lot of the comments I'm seeing from residents are around the street closure. So I'm trying to get an understanding of, are we doing this because it was recommended to us? Are we doing it because the residents want to? Are we doing it because there's low traffic? Just trying to really understand why we would do this.
Sure. Yeah, uh, part of it was a, a comment from our consultant, just-
Okay.
Hey, this is an opportunity to potentially save some road maintenance dollars. Um, I realize they're very short sections, 300-ish feet on each, in each case. Um, so not, not huge lengths of road. But, uh, you know, there was a question or a concern that it, does this mean more, you know, more homes in, on those two-
Yeah.
-streets? And it does not. Um, we do have utilities through the area, so we would have to, we would, at a minimum, keep that, that right away, um, so that we did have access to any utilities through there. So... Um, it, it was really just an opportunity. It's something that we're, you know, we wanted to present to council. I think it's, uh, definitely something worth considering. But should council decide that those streets, uh, remain as, as a full-wit street, um-
Yeah. I've never seen it before, so I was just really curious. And for me, if there's, if there's not a safety rationale or a desire, I'd really like to hear from the residents on, because they live here and I don't, I just see their comments. So that's where I'm at from, from looking at that perspective.
I, I should mention too, um, I, we have talked to emergency services and the bus company as well.
Yep.
To be honest, you know, had the fire chief or police chief said, "That's a problem. We don't want those closed." We don't want those closed," you wouldn't even be seeing this at this point, so.
Right, no, I, yeah, I get that, yep.
Yeah. I would just second that too, just, just to say that, by doing this, is this going to push traffic to one major artery, or that all of a sudden is going to overload one artery, or?
Certainly, that's a, that's a fair question. I, you know, these streets, they're local streets, so they really don't see, they seem, you know, what I would, what I would consider minimal cut-through traffic coming through there, the exception might be 155th Street, because that does connect both Shannon and Chippendale. But otherwise, there's, there's no real direct route between those two collector streets, so. You know, the, the amount of traffic that would be on, any of the streets within this neighborhood are, are well within the capacity of those roads.
Okay.
Press, Lord.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm assuming the number of residents are going to speak on this, because I'm, I'm very interested in hearing from the residents.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we weren't, I, I wasn't made aware, we weren't made aware of the December 6 meeting, and I understand that, that just, it was, it just got missed. But that would have been something I certainly would have wanted to attend. It wasn't, it wasn't on our city calendar, we weren't given notice of it, so I would have really liked to have been at that meeting. Now, having said that, you said it was pretty light attendance, not a lot. I'm hoping that we do get to hear from residents tonight, because I have, I have, I generally would just have reluctance to do it, if, if residents who live in that area, if they're used to having that, unless they're opposed to keeping it. My, my, my first thought is, we just keep it. I mean, Colombian Circle, I mean, if they're, if they're used to driving that road, I mean, the only benefit would be to individuals who live right on that road, that might feel like they get a little bit more yard, because it feels like now they don't have a road going through there, so those residents would be thrilled, probably. I don't, I don't want to speak for them, but that's how I might feel. But I'm just really anxious to hear comments from the residents on that tonight. And then I just, on the Claret Park, shifting gears a little bit, there's no parking lot, and I, I think the only other, Dan can maybe weigh in here, the only other parks, is it, is it Chippendale and Kidder are the only two other parks that don't have parking lots? Are the, are those the only three in, in, in Rosemount that don't have parking lots?
Off the top of my head, I should have grabbed my park list I have in my folder. Birch doesn't have any, a parking lot, nor does Biscayne, Claret, Kidder, Delara.
Oh.
Yeah, you're, you're really, I'm digging deep here, I'm trying, you know, I'm trying to think off the top of my head. But we have a handful, a lot of them are a little bit older parks that were built, you know, back in the late 70s. That would be, you know, Charlie's Park, doesn't have any, in, over by the middle school, there's no, no parking lot there, so. You know, back when we built some of those parks, you know, for a lot of those, I was not, you know, at the city of Rosemount. I was still attending middle school or elementary school, but when we built a lot of those parks, that just wasn't the, that wasn't the style of park, because there's no ball field or playfield. Really, it's just built more for the neighborhood, where people are going to walk to it and, and access it by foot or by bicycle, so we don't really see a real need for the parking. I know we did have some issues at Claret Park, probably maybe six or seven years ago, when we first introduced the pickleball courts to that neighborhood, all of a sudden, you know, Claret Avenue was just lined with cars. And so, we are going to be taking those pickleball courts out of that, out of that park. Those will be converted back to tennis solely, because we are building the new pickleball complex all by the Umore Ballfields. And so, knowing that has been an issue in the past, we want to alleviate that issue, because you get out there and you get cars on both sides of, of Claret, and it's, it's a tough access through there. So, our goal is to, like I say, take the, the pickleball nets out of there, re-stripe that, and fix the cracks in the courts, so it's just used for tennis, and then we will alleviate hopefully any problems with parking on that road for, for future residents that live in that area.
And, and my understanding correctly, there may be an opportunity where we could decide to have a little bit of a bump out for parking, or is there not enough, not enough land to do, to do that?
You know, I'd have to look at that. There might be some land on the, would be the east side of the road, closest to the tennis court complex. That's something we could definitely look at. You know, if people do want to drive over there, if they've got a carload of kids and they can't get them all there by foot or on bike, I think that might make some sense. We did that up at Greystone Park, if you recall.
Yep.
Greystone Park is more of a neighborhood park, doesn't have, doesn't have a real, it doesn't have an active playfield or a soccer, baseball, whatever, but we did put a bump out in, so, because there, there are going to be people of, you know.
For drop-off.
Drop-off, or maybe grandpa and grandma are bringing them over, and they're unable to walk them, you know, four or five blocks, so there is that thought, we could definitely look at that.
Because the concerns that I read here was that there's parking, often, there's parking on both sides of, of the road, which always, always, you know, brings, brings safety issues.
Correct, absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, you bet.
Question for, for me, when was the last time this area was dealt with?
As in, maintenance or construction?
Yeah. Has there been a?
I.
Or is this like the first time out?
This is, this is pretty close to the first time out. I, I don't have that, all that information in my back pocket. I can certainly get that from council.
I'd be just curious as to, you know, we've, how long we, how mu- how much life we got out of what was there, so I appreciate that. Recognizing this is just a, a resurfacing, it's not a full-type deal, so we, I know it's not that long, but.
Yeah, I, Mayor, if I could, I think what we found were the streets had a range in age from, some were originally constructed in the 1970s era up through late 80s, early 90s, if I'm not mistaken, so there's a variety out there, and that, that lends itself a little bit to what you saw earlier. There's a variety of pavement ratings there. Having said that, on the whole, they're very low and well below what our, what we aspire to have as street conditions any given place. I think the highest-rated streets fall below that 60-rating threshold that we use to mark when a more significant reconstruction or pavement replacement is due.
Yeah, so it, it just feels like this area is due for some reconstruction, so.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? All right. And we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this topic may do so, come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and your question or concern. The floor is open.
Mayor, Mayor, before, I'm sorry, sir, one more comment, just to clarify, one thing coming into this meeting that we want to point out is that, without getting too long-winded here, there are publication requirements that come with a, a project being facilitated like this, where there will be assessments involved and so forth, and we had a mishap with the newspaper receiving our notification, therefore, it didn't publish on the dates that we required it to be, so we're, we're safe to proceed with opening the public hearing tonight and taking comments, but we, we cannot close it at this time. We'll have to ask the council to continue it at the next council meeting, where we can, you know, reopen it, so to speak, take additional comment if there is, then close it, and then council can make the decisions at that time.
Just because of the newspaper article didn't go in time, right? Just technicality.
Residents were still mailed the notice as required, and we posted it here at City Hall like required, but we had an electronic transmittal error that occurred, and the newspaper didn't receive it unbeknownst to us until it was too late.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is John Anderson, and my address is 15407 Choke Cherry Avenue. So I would be kind of in one of these corners, and, and I respectfully disagree on the, the condition of the roads. We have a couple of dogs, and, and we're out walking our dogs, you know, just about every day around this whole neighborhood, and since I got the letter, I've been kind of driving the roads, kind of giving them a extra good look, and honestly, the worst road out of all of these is 155th, and that's not even on here, so that's, that really surprised me, because that is the one road that's traveled the most and has, huh? Yeah. So, with the pictures and stuff up here, you know, anybody can take a camera and, and go around and find the worst spots on the roads, but gosh, I've never driven down any of these streets and said, oh wow, these are really in bad condition. There's no potholes, there's no, there's some cracks and stuff like that, but the other thing is, is, you know, I've been around since 2009, and the roads have never, you know, been tarred and, and rocked, or, or, or patched in any way at all, so. I don't know. The other thing is, is if they're going to do that, then, you know, what's the condition of the other utilities underneath the road, as long as they're going through it? I would hate to see this done, and then in five, 10 years from now, you know, having to tear them up, begin to put fiber optic in, or whatever the case would be, you know. I don't know what the average life of a road is, you know? Is it 50 years? Is it 40 years? I, I don't know, so. But there's been no maintenance on the roads at all, you know, since I've been around, so I, I, I would go for patch repair and oiling it and rocking it, and on a hot summer day, and letting it tighten up, just like some of the other roads in the neighborhood that have been done, so.
Thank you.
My name is Corey Hargrove, I'm at 355654th Street. I've lived there since the house was brand-new, 1998, we moved in there. I agree with John, there's, there's never been any maintenance to those streets, they've never done any cracks with the tar, they've never put gravel and tar on there, in, ever, since I've lived there. My opinion on the Circle, taking out Circle Avenue, right now, it's a small street, obviously, but there's street drains on each side of that street. How much does it cost to take those street drains out? Are you going to just cap off the sewer system there? I think that's the biggest, biggest amount of money is taking out those two streets. And the people that live on both sides of that street, they have fences, so it's not going to, it's not going to benefit them, use, somebody said, to make their yard bigger. Their yard's not going to be any bigger. So if you put a 10-foot trail through there, then as a city, how much does it cost for the next 20 years for the city to take care of the grass there? You know, is it going to come all weedy and crappy-looking? There's more upkeep. I mean, we did not keep the roads to begin with. We don't have sidewalks on 154th Street. I know 153rd and 152nd do. I already thought that they have wheelchair accessibility at the end of those sidewalks there, so I don't, I don't know why that would be. And then again, the, the letter I got here is my assessment's $1,999. On the screen there, he just said it's $3,700, so the money, the money assessments are all over the place here. I mean, one's $1,900, one's $4,000. Without, I don't know how you can assess somebody if you haven't decided whether you're going to take out them streets, and I think those streets are, don't need to be taken out, that's the highest cost of the project.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Steve Elm, and I live at 3855154th Street West, and I've lived there for 28 years, so. I mean, history, I've got a little bit of history of what's going on there. I'll tell you, the road between Columbia and Claret, where I drive every day, a couple of times a week, is crap. It's coming apart, and all the years I've lived there, once we put rock and oil down, and that's been a long time since that was done. And so, it's just getting, it's getting worse, something needs to be done. I don't want to pay $4,000 to have the roads done, but something needs to be done at this point, because they are getting worse. Fixing a pothole, they did it, and a month later, it's getting worse, and so the area's getting bad. I ride my bicycle through the whole area, in fact, all over Rosemount, and, you know, I search out the new roads. They're wonderful where we put them in, you know, it's great. I don't happen to live on one of those, but that's okay. I, I would be, you know, I know it's easy for a consultant to go, well, we don't need those two sections. I drive on Columbia every day, at least twice a day. I don't go down to Claret unless I'm riding my bike down that way. I'm sure the people that live down there would like to, you know, to continue to have it, but Columbia connects 150, 153rd and 155th, so it gets a lot of traffic both ways, that are people coming in around, and I guarantee you, if you close those down, there'll be more traffic on 153rd than 155th, and people already speed on there already. I mean, I don't have as many young kids on my street as we used to when I first moved there, but there's still a lot on 153rd, and, you know, I, through my neighborhood, I just prefer to drive at, you know, that 25 to 30. It's bad enough on Shannon Parkway, near the park right there, with people speeding through there already, so. I just think if we close that out, we are going to force traffic onto that part. So, I, I really want everybody to be, you know, consider that. I, I think we need to do something with the roads, you know, we, the streets, it's been a long time since anything's been done. It looks like, I'm sure we're spitballing the amount that it's going to cost at $2 million if we don't have any bids yet, and so, you know, I, I, that, I'm sure that it could possibly go up once we get, you know, bids for that work to be done, so. You know, that's TBD on what it's really going to cost us in the long run, but I just wanted to say, I've been there for a long time, you know, and I don't want to see those streets closed in. We do need to do something, and, you know, and so, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Patrick Wojahowski, I'm on 15231 Collin Berry Circle. I got three points to make tonight. The first one, semi-speaking on behalf of a neighbor that wasn't able to make it tonight. There was a comment made about if there was any comments from the Chief of Fire or Chief of Police, and my neighbor has reached out to them via email, they have not responded, so if you're waiting on comments from either of those two, people have put out a request for information or belief if there's any issues or concerns with that. Second comment is that, even though I don't live on a street that necessarily uses Columbia Avenue, we traverse that quite often, we have friends and neighbors that live on the other street over. And then also, coming up 153rd towards Shannon, oftentimes, I will take Columbia to get to 155th, just because it's so much easier to turn left at that point at 155th versus trying to turn left at 153rd. There's a large tree there that blocks the view, plus the wind, people come through there quite often, very quickly. Those are the two big ones. And I apologize, I forgot what the third may be, but just, the point is that we do use these streets quite often. I agree that not something that should necessarily, necessarily be closed, just my belief. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, council members. My name's Adam Bengson, we live at 3628154th Street West. We are essentially at the south intersection of Circle Avenue and 154th Street. I also am speaking on, on behalf of a couple of neighbors that weren't able to be here tonight. I also have three points to make, so hopefully I can remember those. But the, the first is really a thank you. I, I appreciate the, the council, the city, always looking forward to how we can better our, our city. I understand that road improvement is part of that, and, and so I want to take you, or thank you for looking thoughtfully at this and really considering what impact this has. I also want to thank the, the city engineer, I spoke with him this morning, he's been super responsive, and really great at getting answers to our questions, so thank you for that. The second is, we brought our, our house in 2005, and at least at that point, Circle Avenue was in place. I also spoke with our neighbors that, that have said that it was in place before that as well, and I assume that when a neighborhood is planned, there is thoughtfulness and good planning that goes into that about ingress and egress and, and traffic that goes in and out of that area. And while I understand that connectivity would be, would be maintained from a pedestrian standpoint with a trail, I can validate that we, we specifically, our family, uses Circle Avenue every day, and when it comes to maintenance, I believe that you're correct. The, in closing off that particular pathway, more traffic would be driven out to that main artery of Claret. That is the spot that I see many potholes forming, and so when it comes to preventing maintenance costs, I think that this actually would be one way to, to keep that from happening, is to keep those streets open, because it lessens the amount of traffic that, that goes because it lessens the amount of traffic that, uh, that goes on there. Uh, and then the third point is, um, uh, is something that was mentioned earlier. And that is, if we are doing this project, no matter what, whether the streets stay in or come out, um, I would encourage the Council and, uh, and the consultants to consider how we can improve our utilities. Um, one particular utility that I know, um, is an opportunity is the installation or upgrading of fiber optic cable. Uh, I spoke with a company that serves Rosemont called Gigabit Minnesota. They currently do not have fiber optic cable in that area and they would certainly like to do that. And so, if, when the roads are at least partially, um, torn up, that would afford them the opportunity to do it. Um, I would ask that the, the Council, the city, uh, and the consultants plan to, uh, to talk with those utility providers to make sure that those opportunities are utilized.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name's Anita Gamache. I'm at thirty-six, forty-four, one hundred and fifty-fourth Street. I live right next door to Adam. Um, I, along with several others, am against the closing of Circle Avenue. I'm semi-retired. That avenue is used as a regular, on a regular basis by neighborhoods and all, you know, all the people in the neighborhood and utilities and what have you. Um, I also guess I just have a few questions. I don't, I know, I've been there since December of nineteen ninety-eight. And there was at one point in time, as one of the other gentlemen suggested, there was some oil and gravel put down at one point in time. I don't, it was probably in the early two thousands. Um, so there is road improvements that probably need to be done, especially to Clarrett because that does get a lot of potholes. Um, but I guess I don't know myself how the road construction works. How long is the road, is the road gonna be shut down? If it is shut down, how long is it shut down for? Can we access our driveway? We actually store a trailer on our driveway in the summer months. Would we be able to get that in and out of the driveway? Um, so those are some questions I have. And I guess if they are gonna be doing, you know, some re-grading or improvements of the road, when that road was put in, there's a, you know, there's drainage by my next door neighbor house, you know, Adam's house. But the, it's not graded properly. The water actually pools in front of our mailbox and in front of our driveway. So, this time of the year, if there's a nice storm or a lot of snow melt, we get a big, huge icy spot right in front of our driveway where the mailbox is. The water doesn't actually make it to the drainage where it's supposed to go. So, that's a concern that I have that if we are gonna do some road improvement that I would like looked at. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Andy Ammet. Um, thank you for opening this up to the public.
Sorry, your address?
Um, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, I'm right on the corner of Columbia. The proposed, um, change, we are right on the corner of one fifty-fourth and Columbia. So, our backyard, what is parallel to Columbia.
Can you give your house number, please?
So, if you close that down, I'm sorry, what?
Can you give us your house number?
Three, eight, nine, nine.
Thank you.
One hundred and fifty-fourth Street. Sorry, you guys have a better map. I'm pointing. Can't you see me pointing?
[laughing]
I'm right there. So, we have kind of mixed feelings, um, mostly because who wouldn't love to have an extension of their yard? And the fastest traffic we see comes that corner. It whips off Shannon, comes around and comes through. Um, so my little kids with no sidewalk there, that's always been a concern. There's not, it's not a four-way stop, so cars just have to be yielding and, and proper. So, that's always been a concern. Um, so, I, I have mixed feelings about whether we close the road or not. Um, there's definite drainage problems in that whole backyard area. In my backyard, the neighbor's backyard that meets my, there's definitely drainage problems. So, if they don't close the road, they need to fix some of the drainage stuff. There's just standing water there every spring that I go out and do whatever with. Um, the other thing of that is there's no sidewalk on one fifty-fourth, as has been mentioned. So, I didn't know if that was something they were planning on putting in. If you put in this nice pedestrian path and it goes nowhere, then we're gonna have foot traffic across our yard and wherever, 'cause there's just gonna be a trail. So, we've never had a sidewalk down either side of one fifty-four. So, I don't know if that was part of the planning or not. Um, that was one of my questions. Um, also, uh, let me just look at one more, a couple more notes that I took tonight. I think that is the biggest issue, um, the sidewalk without having stop signs. And that is the fastest part. And it, our, right in front of my house was the picture of the potholes. That corner is terrible for potholes. They fill them, fill them, fill them, and nothing. So, that definitely needs roadwork. I'm not necessarily thinking that taking out that road would change that, but that seemed, there could be something to that of that road, that Columbia being the turn right there and that main intersection getting all of the potholes that are in front of our house. So, I'm not sure. Um, so either way, uh, again, we would love more yard. That would take a lot of questions from us four homeowners that sit on that bank right there. If we do jet our fences out, what more do we own? So, that's a kind of a, a whole other topic. If we keep the road, I'm fine with that. I would just hope we would do some improvements and possibly think about a, a stop sign. Um, I know we don't do that in the small neighborhoods, but that is a very fast road where our kids without sidewalks could, it could be dangerous. And that's all that I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, Council members. Uh, my name is Jim Cots. I live on thirty-nine, thirty-three, one hundred and fifty-fourth Street West. And, uh, I moved to this house in nineteen eighty-eight. And, uh, I, uh, so I'm on the cul-de-sac side there. There's nine houses in the cul-de-sac. And, uh, when I first moved there, uh, there was no one hundred and fifty-third Street. That was put in like about a year and a half later, if I remember right. And, um, to get to one hundred and fifty-fourth Street, you went on one hundred and fifty-fifth to get there. And actually, I am actually, I like the idea of closing those two portions. And the reason for, for my thoughts is, uh, I think it would actually help the traffic flow. Because I think right now, we actually have too much, um, access point as far as being able to go about any direction you can. Um, I have a feeling just for myself, as I leave, yes, I, yes, I would go out on one hundred and fifty-fifth. But if I'm out on one hundred and fifty-fifth, as someone mentioned earlier, uh, turning on Shannon Parkway, uh, whether it's summertime or wintertime, one hundred and fifty-fifth on, uh, Shannon Parkway is, is much easier to make that turn because of that little curve on Shannon Parkway. Uh, not so much this year where we don't have big snow, snowbanks. But, uh, in the past, the snowbanks would cause a block on one hundred and fifty-third. And, um, yes, the, the, uh, the, as you heard, the, the road does need, uh, work. It's, uh, um, like people said before, I think it's only been done once as far as resurfaced. Uh, but, uh, so I just wanted to state that I was actually for, uh, the closures.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Uh, Marie Wojahowski. I am Patrick Wojahowski's wife. Um, one, five, two, three, one, Columberry Circle. So, we're back in the cul-de-sac. Um, I remembered his third thing. And I have one other item.
[laughing]
So, the, the first one that I'll bring up is just the assessment fee. Um, this neighborhood, as you've heard, a lot of people have been there a long time. We have been there ten years, almost eleven. Um, we bought this when the houses were much less than what they're going for now. And so, to see some of that assessment fee come in and think, okay, we have to pay that or get a TBD interest rate, that's like a dagger. 'Cause you're like, okay, well, that's a family vacation or other things. I'll also speak for a couple other neighbors. We have some single, single moms in the neighborhood who are trying to make things work. And that would be pretty detrimental. So, I get that it's two million dollars, but there clearly hasn't been enough work on the road to warrant, like, we've all paid enough taxes to probably cover that road quite a couple times, right? Like, that's, my request would be, how can we lessen that burden on this group of people when we've been neglected on that, that work? Also, okay, last thing. Um, if we were to close those, I would ask that we get speed bumps on one fifty-third, maybe on the other streets. Um, we have a lot of young kids that range from, well, one all the way up to thirteen, and they all play together. And it's a wonderful neighborhood. If you drive through it in the summer, it's amazing. And they're all playing together, having fun. We teach them safety, but there are just, people cut through that to get to the movie theater and they just fly. So, we try to put signs out. We try to wave and say hi. We're watching. It doesn't always work. So, those are my couple of points. Thank you for giving us the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So technically, that's four and five, right?
[laughing]
Good evening, Council members. My name is Robert Reese. I live in kind of the circle, which is one, five, three, six, six, Choke Cherry Avenue. I've been in this area for about eleven years. And I would agree with most, just about everything that's been said as far as, uh, there hasn't been a lot done. Um, and as the lady who just was up here, I don't think enough's been done to warrant this level of, um, cost for the, the homeowners to take this on. As far as the roads being taken out, um, my opinion would be to leave them in, 'cause I don't think the city would want to upkeep that area. And with the pathway, are you gonna bring snow plows and clear it? I mean, I don't see it being done. Um, and then if it's a sidewalk being through there, I mean, I've seen a lot of the sidewalks in that area that are, there's cracks, there's grass growing through them. They're, I mean, they just are not upkeep. So, I'm not convinced that this area is gonna be upkeped as well. Um, and, uh, it was mentioned earlier about parking for Clarrett Park. Um, I know that's, I don't know if that's technically on the docket, but I just wanted to bring that out, that, um, I drive by Clarrett Park multiple times a day. And it's not just people parking there for the park. People just, because of Cub or something, I don't know, people just tend to park on Clarrett Avenue on both sides, just to park, I think. I'm not sure. Um, so I, there is a grass area that, uh, that is kind of behind, um, great clips and stuff like that, where I think even if it was just three or four parking spots, I think it's well worth it. Um, when they redid the park, I also asked, can they just even put in a soccer goal for, 'cause it's just a random field and nobody uses a field. But I think if you just even had a soccer goal, kids would come and just kick the ball at the goal. I mean, I think there's more to do with that field. Parking is probably top of my list, right? Uh, a soccer goal would probably be less expensive, right? If you just put a soccer goal in. Um, but.
It gets kicked under the street.
Sure.
Um, I wanna also agree that I think one fifty-fifth is probably, should be on the docket. Um, I think it's, that road as far as wear and tear, if you did a compare between one fifty-fourth and one fifty-fifth, I'd be like, you know, I was like, who missed this, right? I, I don't, I think that road is, uh, pretty, just as bad. Um, I agree that some things need to be done. I think there's, you know, Clarrett Avenue tends to get a lot of potholes that are just kind of re, I don't know, patched or whatever every year. And they just kind of last for a few months and goes away. Um, but yeah, that's about, that's it. But thank you for your time.
Thanks. Thank you.
My name is Ed Lesch, three, nine, one, five, one hundred and fifty-third Street West. I just have a couple of questions. Why are you considering removing these streets? What's, what's the purpose for doing it? And what's going to be in its stead? Is it just grassland across? What's this optional trail connection? What does that mean? And what's rain garden possibilities? What does that mean? I mean, you're talking about getting rid of something, but you don't say what you're replacing it with. As far as I'm concerned, on the Columbia one, it'd be great for me. Then I don't have to look in my rearview mirror when I back out of the driveway. 'Cause no, my, that Columbia jumps right into my driveway and the thing. So, but that's just my questions, you know? Why is this being proposed at all? And what benefit is there for doing it? You know, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You heard earlier, we will not be closing the public hearing. We'll be, uh, continuing it to, what's our next date?
February sixth.
February sixth. So, the action item that's on the, uh, on the agenda, we will not be taking any action this night. Uh, and we will reconvene on the sixth, um, and reopen the, uh, hearing at that time. So, right now, motion to close comments.
Continue, I would say.
And continue the hearing until February sixth. Good with that?
So moved.
Yep.
Motion in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close. All right. So, again, the public hearing is continued till the sixth. Uh, we'll take, uh, additional comments between now and then. The information, unless there's anything that staff wants to respond to, anything specific now, or we'll come back and respond probably that evening.
Yeah, I, just thinking out loud here a little bit, Mayor, there, there may be benefit for the folks that are in the room if we run through
Yeah.
the questions now. Um, I, I have a feeling that, that could help just bring clarity heading into the next opportunity for comment. Then maybe some things will have been made more clear, uh, from our end. But I would look to the Council to give staff direction on which specific elements, um, you'd like us to speak to. And I would ask that City Engineer Erickson and our consultant lead the way with, uh, with responding to those.
I, well, first of all, I, I would just like to say that I think the, the feedback's really good. And we appreciate all the, the faces here. And I, I think I would just like to know more about if we just leave them, if there's, if there's a huge cost to it because, um, or speak a little bit more to that. Because I think there was question, if there is a sidewalk, why is there a sidewalk? What does it look to? And I think you touched on it a little bit, but maybe just go into that a little bit. Because from what I heard, the majority is leave them there, from what I saw.
Yeah. Eight out of eleven, eight point five out of eleven.
Eight point five out of eleven?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I, uh, you know, really, it was a, an idea presented to us, something to, to review. Hey, there's, uh, there seem to be some additional connections. There's no driveways on those in particular. Um, you know, I think there was a misunderstanding at one point. For example, somebody thought Choke Cherry was one of them to be closed, which we can't because there's driveways there.
Sure.
Um, as far as the construction cost piece, there's not, there's not a substantial difference between, you know, with rough estimate between leaving the road in place or taking the road out. It really comes at a future, um, with future maintenance on whether it's just a trail or whether it's the road coming through there. So, um.
I, I think I did hear some comments and I, um, I have to go back and ask a little bit about maintenance. But the idea that these would be not necessarily sidewalks, but trail widths, um, through there. So, they would be, uh, probably added to our plow, um, areas if that was the case.
That's, we, we've had that discussion, yes. And that would be the plan.
There's talk of water issues in and around that areas. I think that spurred the ideas of rain gardens maybe being a part of that, um, solution, I guess, if that was the case.
Right. Uh, in, in particular, sorry to interrupt, Mayor, but, uh, Circle Avenue in particular does have storm catch basins at, at the mid-block point. Um, you know, so that would be an opportunity there. That's why, we, we wouldn't propose removing that storm line through there. Um, it would provide it an opportunity that if we did put a rain garden in there, it, it does have an overflow then. It could go into that storm line should we get, you know, a large, you know, a large storm or back-to-back large storms. It wouldn't just inundate the area.
Yeah. One, one of the things that stood out to me, and maybe you can talk more about this, but I, I think I heard, first of all, we heard that eight and a half of, of the eleven that spoke aren't, don't, you know, necessarily don't wanna have them removed. But the other piece of that, that I thought was interesting is that one fifty-fourth doesn't have a sidewalk. So, if we do have a walking trail, what are we, you know, where are we sending the flow of people? So, I, I guess that, that doesn't make sense to me either. But, you know, for the removal.
Yeah, I, I do know that, um, you know, like you said, these, these areas are developed and that's, you know, some time ago. Uh, I think our current standard is, um, and maybe one fifty-fourth doesn't fit that, um, a I think our current standard is, and maybe 154th doesn't fit that, although it feels like it, it would, it should have had at least a sidewalk on one side of the thing. The problem that we run into now, and we've seen this in other much higher trafficked areas, is that when we try to go back and put a sidewalk in, as much as we think that that's a great idea, we've left it up to the homeowners along there, and a lot of times they don't like having a sidewalk to either shovel, or they don't want to lose the land that they had in the front of there. So it's always a problem to try to go back and put a sidewalk. I would certainly agree that there should be, personally, I like sidewalks on both sides of the street, but that's a different issue. So that is a concern. There was, I think, a question I saw about the assessments. There was two numbers floating around, and I, I wanted to pull back to your, where you were showing that. I think one number was being shown at like 4,000, and the other number that was being talked about was 2,000 or something.
There we go. Thirty-eight, fifty-eight.
Yeah. I'm, I'm unsure where a $1,900 assessment came from. I know that the letter that was provided showed the estimated total project cost of 1.9 million. And, and so, I, I'm not sure if that's the...
Sure.
Where there's a, a small...
Disconnect.
And after, I'm guessing after we finish, if, if you've got some information like that, and you want to bring it up and share it with staff or ourselves, please do.
I have to the 1.9.
Okay, back up one. Yep. So that's a project cost?
So that's the, that's the total project cost? That includes design? You know, there's a construction contingency in there, and all the construction cost. That's, so that would be for everything? And that number is, I, I went back and checked the, the letter that was provided to the residents. That number is in the letter that they received.
That's the number, okay. So that is not an assessment cost. The assessment dollars that are being assessed are showing under that funding summary, under assessments, the total amount being assessed is 615,000. Estimate, right? At this...
That's correct, and then based on, I, I use the, the single family is the easy piece, right? We just do a per-lot assessment, and it's, it's divided amongst all the homes on that.
I think those are probably the easiest ones to maybe help assess. Is there any other ones that...
There, there was a couple of comments and questions around the process for identifying when roads would be constructed. So can you speak a little bit about, just about our overall annual budget that we have to play with every year, if you will, and how we identify streets and how the rating is? If you could kind of talk about that process a little bit?
Sure. You know, we have the, the capital improvement plan is where, where the streets are selected, so we do that review based on what we know with the street conditions. These, the numbers that were shown in the presentation are from three years ago. And so we're, we actually do that every three years, we do that pavement condition rating. So, that's coming up this year.
Can you go to that next slide while you're talking about that then? Because I, I think, was that the, the total cost? Where it took about the assessment? Yeah, there, there we go. So the general fund, is that what you're talking about?
So that's part of, yes, that's part of the street CIP fund, and that, that's where that...
That's the majority of this cost is actually there, yeah.
Correct, yes.
The funding.
Oh, the funding, sorry.
Funding, yeah. But back on the, the numbering and the system, that's something that I know that we've had in place for well over ten years.
Yes.
Want to say maybe almost fifteen years now, that we've had some type of assessment to be able to identify what projects, and, and you're saying that those numbers, can you go to that one where those numbers, and they vary on there, but you're saying that those are likely three years old?
Yes, and, and so it's in, it's our, in our asset management system, and that does calculations that will, you know, we don't, unless we do a major reconstruction, like we're proposing, those numbers are not going to increase over time. And we have a, you know, a curve that has been through a number of...
They're going to be worse.
Yeah, exactly. So that system does calculate that. It's, it's fairly accurate is what we've been finding. You know, it can depend on traffic, or if there's, you know, a lot of construction in the area that sees maybe a lot of truck traffic at some point. But tho, those numbers are where we, we start that with as a baseline for which neighborhoods. I did do a calculation today, so this whole neighborhood is roughly at about a thirty-six or thirty-seven, so I, I realize there's a couple that are much higher. But, you know, generally, that, you know, that even a fifty-nine on a test is not something you really want to see generally, but...
And I think to recognize when, this, this process takes, like you say, over a three-year period, and then we've identified them, what neighborhoods are, they get into, kind of in line. Some of them are stretched out depending on where they are. But then, the thought that, yeah, in some areas here, you, you know, you might have higher numbers, in the other areas, a little lower. We can't go in and just do two houses type thing. It doesn't work that way.
Right. And that, that was, that's been a, a couple of comments I've responded to and said, you know, we, we generally don't like to, my term is orphan those streets, and you let, you do everything around it, and you leave one street. It does get, it gets more expensive. You don't have, you have to bring in, you have to bring in everything you needed for the larger project to do a smaller project at some future date.
And has this area been delayed a couple of years already?
I, one possibly.
One, yeah. So...
Okay.
But it's been on the, it's been on the capital improvement plan for...
So Mr. Essler?
Yep, I just got a couple, you know, follow-up questions here, and I think, you know, kind of respond to the staff, you know, given, in terms of giving direction. First of all, you know, one of the first comments that we made was, the question was asked, why, why are we doing the project? I think one thing, I think we've heard from a few of you guys, I think there's a recognition that it has to be done. We just talked about the index, why it has to be done. Also, I heard a few issues where, you know, we had drainage issues, we had water sitting. That's the other benefit of doing a project like this, is not only do you fix the surface, but you fix a lot of the alignment and the settling, and the, you fix a lot of those potholes, and permanently, or at least on a longer-term basis. So I think if there's any questions why we're doing it, hopefully that, that's been answered tonight. Follow-up, 155th, a couple individuals pointed out that 155th may look worse than the rest of this. Do you happen to know what the index is on 155th?
I do not, none off the top of my head. I can certainly get that.
Okay, because I, I'd be curious, you know, as we go, in, you know, two weeks from now, when we're looking at this again, I'd just be curious, would 155th viably be something we should be considering as well? Pretty unanimously, almost unanimously, leave the roads going into this. When I first read the packet, I asked a question of staff too, like what, what's driving this? There's no savings to the assessments, because all of these road, the, the Circle and Columbia, those two roads don't have any driveways off them. So there, there would be no savings in the assessments to the, to the residents. That would all be city savings. So if there was some net savings there, you, you, you're not going to benefit that in, in terms of the assessment. So just as a data point for you guys. The sidewalk on 154th, I agree with the mayor. I think it'd be a real challenge to try to ask all those residents to say, hey, we're, now we're going to put a sidewalk in. So I think it'd be great. I think we all, all of us would agree, we'd want sidewalks on one, if not both sides of every road. But I think after the fact, it's going to be a lot more difficult to do, do it right now. The, the question was brought up about utilities. If we're digging, if we're digging up the streets, are, are we in a position where we can, you know, do something with utilities? You know, the question was asking about fiber. I do think that's, that's something that definitely staff should be looking into.
I'll chime in on that if I can. Every reconstruction or major infrastructure project that we do, we, we do connect with private utility entities to inform them about what our plan is, the area that we're going into, to give them a heads up, such that if they have infrastructure that they want to add or replace, that is the opportunity to do it. What the city can't do is force an improvement by a private entity. Can't tell them you have to put whatever it is in the ground there. It, it's more of a coordination type of alignment than a imposition. If, if they see that the market's there for their product, or the infrastructure needs there, they'll probably do something. That's where we can express to them, in, in regards to a fiber optic, for instance. We heard from some residents that there may be interest in this, and they can check into it further, but the city can't forcibly require them to put in their facilities. So I just want to clarify.
Okay, that's great.
That follow-up might be, since they know this is going to be, you know, if, if that's really something that you want to pursue, contact them and, you know, inundate them with that request.
Yep.
And then the last comment is Claret Park. I think we should, as I talked to staff earlier today, I'd love to get pricing on what that would, what we could do maybe on a bump out, just from a safety standpoint there. I think that's something that we should probably look into.
Did you mention there is a future project, though, that was going to deal with crossings and...
With, with pedestrian crossings, yes, Mayor.
Would, would some of that be part of that, or this would be kind of separate?
That, that would be a separate program. What City Engineer Erickson was alluding to is this year, we're going to embark on examining all of our collector roads to determine where the most appropriate locations would be for crosswalk enhancements. So it's more of a system-wide look, and then setting the course to do individual projects at key locations where the criteria align that it's a justifiable type of improvement. So, nothing would occur on that front with this project specifically, but folks may see something on either of those streets that were mentioned in the, the next couple of years as an improvement coming out of that study.
All right. Anything else?
Hope that covered mine. Thank you.
Just to address a couple of things that were mentioned, Mr. Essler, we had, I, I have had a very brief discussion with our consultant about the potential for doing something with that curb line on the east side of Claret near the park, just, you know, could we get a couple of parallel spaces in there potentially? So, certainly something we'll look at and see how that fits in with the alignment. And then just to touch base, I know utilities was mentioned, and, and a concern about, we do the street, and five years down the road, no pun intended, we have to come through and tear it out to do something with the utilities. So, I've been, I've been coordinating with our utility, our street and utility supervisor, from a, you know, from a general standpoint, the utilities in this area are not seeing any problems. The sanitary sewer connections are fine. You know, the water main, much like Mr. Egger mentioned earlier, you know, it's seventies to nineties, so water main of that vintage has probably got eighty-plus years of life, give or take. Same thing with the sanitary sewer, so, you know, this, this streets could potentially be reconstructed this year and one more time before they would even...
Do a full reconstruction.
We definitely take a look at that, so.
Awesome.
And there is some stuff, you know, now where we do, we try to do in-place, so you don't even have to, you know, tear the whole road up to redo sanitary, for example, so. So those public utilities are in, they're in fine condition. There is some stuff we'll do, but generally, they're in good condition.
You were talking about the fire plugs, hydrants.
The fire hydrants, correct. Yep, so some of those do need some work, but...
Yeah, that was one other thing that was, that was asked today, that maybe you can clear up too, the access. As construction is commencing, people have access to their driveway. I mean, you know, we're not, we're not going to, not allow people to get in and out of their driveway. I mean, I'm sure there's going to be gravel and stuff, but I'm sure you guys will communicate all that, right?
Yes, so we'll have a, we'll have a full-time inspector on-site when that work is ongoing. There will be times that you can't get into or out of your driveway. That will be passed along to those residents ahead of time, so you don't wake up in the morning a little bit late for work. You know, you had the morning off, and the next thing you know, you can't pull out of your driveway. Certainly something that we'll pass that along. One, and, and really that, those windows are very limited, because they do try to, for example, you've seen the reclaim photo, you really can't drive through that until they do some shape and work on that, so they don't, it doesn't sit like that for days. They're usually right behind that, working on getting a, a drivable surface again. The other time would be when they're paving, you know, and generally, once, once the rollers come past on some of it, you can generally drive over it. If they do put the, they put the asphalt, the tack coat down, the oil down, we certainly don't want folks driving on that, because they're not going to like what it does to their car, so.
Sure, sure.
Do you have one?
No, I was just going to add, I think you guys were looking for some feedback. By my count, we had eleven people speak, and thank you for doing that. Nine people were against closing the roads, one was neutral, the lady in the front row, and one was against. So from, from what I'm hearing and seeing, I'm not, I'm still not understanding the benefit of why we would close them, so I would, I would go with the residents, so. That's all.
Yeah. And I anticipated coming into this, that that was the feedback we were going to hear. I mean, people live in the, live in the neighborhood, that's what they're used to, you know, barring any safety concerns or anything like that. I, I don't know why we'd, why we'd want to do that.
But thanks.
But thanks for the innovation. Innovation.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. All right. Nothing else? As indicated, 7A will be continued till February 6th.
Thanks, Frank.
And that completes item 7A for this evening. We'll move on to item eight. Mr. Merkin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Per state statute, we, the city held a closed session on January 2nd to do my, my performance evaluation, and so per state statute, we need to report out on the results of that performance evaluation in that closed session at the next open regular city council meeting. So we are here tonight to convey that, and we'll just briefly go over the conversation that was had in the closed session regarding my annual performance. First of all, I want to thank the city council. We had a really productive and good conversation on the second. A little bit of context for, for anybody listening at home. City staff, HR manager Jamie Isaac sent out a digital survey, performance evaluation to the city council to assess my performance from the previous year in a number of different categories, similar categories we've had since I started here in the city, that we can then benchmark kind of my performance and trajectory over the course of my performance here, and my tenure here at the city. So thanks to the council for filling that out, and like I said, we had a really good conversation about that. The, the, the categories are listed in the council packet. Things like organizational management, fiscal management, relationship with the council, long-range planning, relationship with the public, intergovernmental relations, and personal and professional development. Overall, the, on a scale of one to five, most scores were received in the four category, indicating meeting or exceeding expectations in those categories. And again, I think a council can provide any perspective that they had. From my standpoint, I think we had a really good conversation about my strengths, my weaknesses, areas for growth, and abilities to continue going well, going forward. And kind of as that aligns, we've got our goal-setting session this week with the city council. First one here on Thursday, second session next Thursday, where we can kind of establish the next five-year strategic plan for the city. And so things like this, and these conversations really get us in a good headspace to start to kind of chart out the future. But like I said, positive conversation, appreciate the feedback, and continue to certainly enjoy our relationship in my time here. So with that, Mayor, I can turn it back to you, and that should serve as the report out as required by state statute.
Any questions or discussion amongst council? We've all given them kind of a thumbs up.
Yeah, I was just going to... Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
The, the, the thing that isn't included on here is what the trend is. And the one thing I will call out is I think the trend continues to improve year over year. I mean, these are, these are pretty incredible remark, or marks, rankings, but what, what it doesn't show is, it just continues to get better and better. So, thanks for, for all your work, and you're, you're, you're doing a great job for the city, and you represent us well, and we all love working with you.
Thank you.
And I would just add, not only for, for us to work with, it's been an absolute pressure, pleasure, but the, your staff too. I mean, the, the feedback we get from staff continuously is that, you know, you're just absolutely crushing it, a great leader, talking about innovation, talking about some of the things that we're talking about, the growth mindset. You show up well each and every day, and I, I think that shows on how the staff receives that, and then as well as council. It's just been a, a great opportunity just to join this, so, congrats.
Appreciate that.
Anything?
No, just thank you.
Yep. All right, so that'll complete item eight, and, let's see, and we'll move on to new business nine, which we have a update, project update.
Thanks, Mayor, members of the council. I'll take this one again, and then city, or excuse me, Hope Works Director Egger is here as well, from the project team. But happy to be here tonight. No recommended action or formal action needed out of the council tonight. We just wanted to place this item in new business, just to get it in, in a spot where it can get some, some recognition, but... But as we discussed previously, we were going to give a monthly update to the city council on the status of our police and public works campus project. Anybody who hasn't had a chance to drive by safely on Biscayne Avenue and, and take a peek at that project, it is flying. It is going very well. We also have a really active and regularly updated website page dedicated to the public works and police campus project. I said it in the correct order that time there for you, Nick.
Well, what's the web address, Logan?
I, I don't remember. I'm sorry.
Very easy, very easy. It's rosemountmn.gov/pdpw.
In the wrong order. Nick would like it be, could we go on that's PW and PD?
That might cause some...
Confusion. All right, PD, PW, Rosemount, all right, slash PD, PW. There's a power struggle. Who gets mentioned first? So that page has some of the attachments that you see here live on that page. Namely, the, the first attachment is this kind of colorful infographic that the council's got in front of them and residents should take a peek at on that page. We update that week, or excuse me, monthly. And then there's also a continuously updated or monthly updated time lapse video of the project. And so just from a construction standpoint, obviously it looks like a building when you drive by. The structural steel, the chip-up panels, the joists and the roof decking are all in place and completed, which then allowed the beginning of internal pouring of concrete floors to happen. So as the underground utilities have been put in place, concrete floors in PD have, in the PD garage, the gun range have been poured on top of those utilities. In the PW area, there's some final underground utility work happening and then we'll begin pouring the concrete floors. Over the next several weeks, there'll be a bit more exterior wall framing in PW, the finalization of the roof in PW and then mechanical and electrical throughout the buildings. So right now and for the, the next few months, it's on temporary heat inside the building, which is, is not done, you know, for the, the comfort of the, the guys and gals working in there. It's done, so that is important. But what is more important is the, the curing of the concrete as we pour, as we pour the floor. So got to keep the building at a nice temperature to get that concrete to cure before we can start driving vehicles back over it, which are, you know, lifts and things of that nature that are used for constructing ceiling and decking and things of that nature. The project remains on budget as discussed and council, I should mention, was on-site in November, did some hard hat tours and then sat in the construction trailer to really inspect the building and, and the project schedule and the project budget. Our contingency, construction contingency is at one point five three eight million dollars. And that number is assuming that change orders that are attached that are still pending and not receiving or being requested for approval. That assumes that they are spent and it assumes that other contingency items are spent as well, which are unlikely. And so I'm certainly not here to, to prognosticate about what a, a remaining budget or, or budget underage or savings could be. But it's certainly trending towards a budget that would be, or a project that would come in under that fifty-eight point two million dollar budget that the council set at the start of the project. So really, really good news there. Crowe Anderson continues to do just a fantastic job for us in managing the project. And like I said, we've talked in the past about change orders. The council will see a, a change order listing here on the final two pages of this agenda item. All those listed as pending are not being requested for approval tonight. They're all under the fifty thousand dollar limit that staff can consider but for one, which is, which is high right now and they're working on reducing that number and it likely will be pretty significantly reduced from that, that number that's listed there. So the other thing that we'd mentioned previously is we continue to be through the portion of the project that would, that would lead to the largest dollar change orders. And so that typically happens in soil correction time. And then as we, which we did not have, but we did see it in, in steel construction side of it and the joists and things of that nature, that did happen on this project and we're through that. We had a big change order for that that we discussed previously. So really hopeful that the things coming down the pipe here are, are smaller change orders, if any at all. Maybe the last thing I'll add that I mentioned, I think in the narrative there, we completed furniture tours last week. And so a few of the finishes that the, the owner gets to select and install throughout the project are, are, were separately bid with Crowe Anderson in the public bidding process, but then we can select based on the catalogs that they have for us. And so things like information technology and then office furniture and things of that nature. So we did some tours last week of showrooms for furniture and, and office equipment. Yeah, we're all looking for better chairs here in the council chambers. That's, that's on the list, trust me. But as we had to sit in some chairs and, and do some chair tests and, and look at cubicles and things of that nature. And, and really exciting to start to visualize what that building could look like when it gets specked out and, and built out. So that's, that's part of the fun stuff that's starting to begin here as we, we fill up the building. But still on schedule for a December occupation by our two teams and on track to be under, I'll say under budget, but at least on budget. So Nick, anything that I missed there that you want to add?
No, that was very robust and full of energy. Great job. Great job, Logan. Thank you.
Happy to take any questions.
Is your office now concreted?
I haven't been over there to see in a couple of weeks, not inside. So I, I don't think they've reached that area yet, not on, not on PW's side. Could be wrong, but we're going over there tomorrow, so.
Yeah. One of the things that I noticed from our November visit, we were talking about the possibility of getting the roof on and it just seems like it's gone so much faster than I had expected. You guys are in the construction business, you're more aware of this, but all of a sudden we see lights in the, you know, in the garage area and everything like that and it just seems like it's really coming alive in the last month or so. Did we really gain a lot because of the weather, like subsiding, not a lot of snow or anything like that? Is that any, is there any?
It hasn't hurt. We haven't asked Crowe Anderson to quantify it, I guess, I'd say. Or how much time do you think you've saved by lack of weather issues? But it sure seems like it's...
They don't want to give that up right now, right?
Well, no, I'm just saying, it's, it's very impressive, I guess. From a person that's not in this industry, I, I don't know.
Because if they, if they gave that up right now, they'd have to give up some of their general conditions and, you know, give money back and...
I'm impressed. My comment was not to assert this, but more to say it's, it's really impressive.
It, it impresses us too, Paul. We, we go there every Wednesday for trail, construction trailer meetings and like it changes every week. It's really wild. So whether it's, I think Crowe Anderson runs a very tight ship and we got lucky with really good contractors, knock on wood, through, through now. And they are, they're burning, they're burning through it. It's, it's really impressive.
Great. Thanks.
Yeah, it's impressive.
Is the, is the building getting smaller yet?
I remember you saying that on the tours. It, it depends what part of it you're in, but certainly that kind of spatial awareness or impression phenomenon is there when you see some interior structure taking form. It, it does have a way of making you think that it's smaller all of a sudden than, than it was when it first was going up and...
Definitely bigger than our current setup.
Yes, yes.
Which is good.
We're not asking for an expansion anytime.
Not yet. Any other questions, comments?
You got a few months.
All right. We'll consider the report accepted. That completes nine A. Move to announcements. Anything from staff updates?
I can take a couple, Mayor members of the council. First, hard to believe as maybe folks watch the, the national news with the Iowa caucuses, but Minnesota is up soon here with cau- presidential caucusing. So in-person absentee voting starts on Friday. So it's, that's hard to believe, but we are geared up and ready. We have a brand-new deputy city clerk on city staff who's been wonderful and she's getting trained up with Ms. Fassbender. And to that end, we still could use election judges. So these are the non-city staff folks that are, that are volunteering basically for us. And so we'd love to have some more election judges, if anybody would like to go online, fill out a, a convenient form and serve your country. So that would be wonderful and plan to vote in the presidential caucuses. And then Mayor, you had mentioned a couple to me that you had already pulled off consent, but one that I wanted that you had mentioned, maybe we'd throw some extra attention behind is one of the consent agenda items that you did tonight was the creation of a, a new position in our police department for a senior records technician. And so really another nice innovation from Chief Dahlstrom here to give some internal promotion opportunities for records technicians that we currently have on our team. And then also addresses a really critical need that we have that has currently been met, but in a, in a maybe non-traditional way in how police departments are structured. And that is in the management of our evidence room. And so these folks are the, the critical linchpins of how we run our evidence room. So when we take in evidence, whether that's in a DUI or a car accident or somebody's cell phone or wallet and we have to re- track that directly and then get that back to them safely, these folks are really directly managing that, that really, really important process, both from a, an evidence standpoint and a potential need for prosecution usage, et cetera. So I wanted to shed some light on the senior records technician. And, and we talking more as you hear over the coming months about some of the more innovative things that we're having to do in the police department to attract and retain individuals. And so one of the things that we can, you know, kind of preview here is a, a program that the state of Minnesota is rolling out that we've quickly or early adopted, which is like a police transition program that allows folks to, to transition from another career path into policing in a more truncated, not truncated, but a focused training schedule if they already have a certain set of degrees or training in other professions. So critical need there to, to make sure that our staffing in both police on the administration side and on the, on the street side is happening. So wanted to call that out and I think that was it on my list, Mayor.
Just one, if you wanted to give kind of a, an early view of the, what we talked at the Port Authority tonight, was the expo coming to town and have people get that date on their calendars.
Sure. March second is the Rosemount Expo, formerly known as the Home and Business Expo. We have decided to brand it a bit differently and broaden it out a bit. And so in the past, maybe it's been focused on, you need a new roof or you need a windows or a deck. Those folks will absolutely still be there and we're excited to, to show them to off to, to residents, but it's also a community expo and more of a business expo as well. So bringing in new ideas, things like classes, so the yoga class or a coffee flight, how to make a coffee flight class, things of that nature. Improv, an improv class. I don't know if somebody's teaching that. But and then a CrossFit class, things of that nature. So you can come and stay busy throughout the day. We've got catered in food that we're subsidizing via our sponsorships and so folks can get a, an affordable lunch and spend a, a good amount of time there. Some, some beer options as well to make it more of kind of a carnival fair-type event. So really hoping to get as many bodies through the, through the event as we can just to both, you know, find, you know, kind of community and community engagement together, but then also really to, to shop and, and to find services and, and associations and clubs that folks might want to join. So March second, nine thirty to two thirty at the Rosemount Community Center. And I'll watch for more. It's kind of being branded as discover your community. So it's kind of a travel-type branding, so.
This is a great thing. Again, get it on your calendar. You'll be hearing more and we'll keep, keep bringing this up as much as possible. I think the rebranding and the activities, if you've been there before, I think this is definitely a, an upgrade and change that I think residents will enjoy. So with that, I'll move on to ten B, the upcoming community calendar. Excuse me. The city council, as noted earlier, will have a special meeting. This will be our goal, annual goal-setting session on Thursday, January eighteenth from three to seven. The Parks and Recreation Commission meeting will be held on January twenty-second from seven to eight PM here at City Hall. The Planning Commission will be on January twenty-third from six thirty to seven thirty at City Hall. The Youth Commission meeting will be held, I believe it's at Steeple Center. It doesn't say, but I believe it's at the Steeple Center, January twenty-fourth, three forty-five to four forty-five. And we will have our second annual goal-setting, second session will be on January twenty-fifth from twelve to four PM. The next time city council get together after that will be at the work session for February sixth from five to seven PM, followed by the city council meeting from seven to eight PM here at City Hall. So with that, unless there's any other business to come before council, I'll move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Oshman made a second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.